Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing. Okay, can hear myself? Alright. Um. Well. Today is eight, eight, eighteen, eighteen, from July 2025. Let's continue our, our study session. Where I can learn things that get them better place to work. Hmm. Just a minute. This. Not sure. Well, here my, is my notion. People, uh, the last time I was re- reading, it was in that data binding basics. This I have. Well, uh, I know, uh. I know I had, um. Let me change here. Okay, um. I know I already had begun this, I don't remember where I stopped. I don't remember where I stopped when I was, um, like the recording, I believe. I believe I wasn't going to bind the mode, I'm sure. Well. I try to do a, a fast forward. No, I will read, uh, read fast to the. To the bindings and collections. I'll try to explain much, much things, please. When you spend so much time. Before the, the la- the, the last lecture, you begin, you begin to lose yourself. Well, um, data binding basics. .NET MOOC platform app user interface data by. .NET Maui data bindings allow properties of two objects to be linked, to be linked. So that a change in one causes a change in the other. Okay, uh, let, let us remember, an object. Um. Hmm, object, or yeah, you know. Programming. Let me get some images. Here, uh, you have a class that describes how something should be. It's a idea and you have an object. Object is the instantiation, is the creation, is the realization. Of that class in the real world. Of course, when you create a class car in your computer, it doesn't appear a car to you. In, in front of, of your garage. But when you create or instantiate this class, this cla- uh, this object, it begins to exist. Uh, occupying a, uh, space in the memory RAM. Something more easy to, to. Yeah. It should be more, more easy to, to you guys, because I, I tried, I, I always try to explain to the easiest way possible. The easiest, easiest way po- um, po- possible. Because when I tried to learn in the past, nobody could explain, I, I needed to read a lot. So I tried to, uh, I have to, I have much knowledge so you can explain, explain things. Going through the simplest, simple, simple, the most simple part to the, to the most complex, complex. So. Objects. An object is instantiation, it's a creation, it's a realization. Of that class data into something, uh, that occupies a, a space of memory. Which memory? Run memory, R A M memory. It begins to occupy. So, when, when you instantiate. That class that represents something from the real world, that represents, represent, that. It is not completely everything of the real world. There are things that a class cannot express off a car. But. This class represents something in the real world. The objects are the instantiation, are the creation of, of this model. Of something into something. And that something occupies a space of memory. That something that occupies a space of memory. Is the same something that we are talking about here. So, .NET Maui. The framework. Uh, data binding, this function. It's a class, but it's a function, data binding. So, data, data that's been binding, binded to something. And, so, sorry, it's data that are being binded to each other data. So, so I bind data to, data to other data. To so, uh, someone that already knows English, it's quite obvious, but to people who doesn't know, I need to explain. Detailing. Data stuff, data is something that has, um, something written in it. Data, data is something that has information that a human can understand. Okay, to be more easily. We human beings can read this thing, this data, and we understand something about it. Not just to understand that what it is, but we get information from this data. Okay? So, data binding. Allow, allow properties. Which I have expressed before, explained before, properties of two objects. So we have two objects. That are so, so, some kind of data. And we are going to bind them, them together, but not, not all together. We are going to bind certain parts in each other. So, when a specific part, when a specific part. For instance. When a specific part that is binding each other parts, when I do something in that part. Something will occur in the odd, in the, in that other part. Of this data, of this object. If I bind this, um, we, uh, this wheel. The word is wheel. When I bind this wheel. To, not to the other wheel, but to any other thing, maybe to the other wheel here in this car. If I do something to here, something happens here. If I bind something, something of this car here with you. With another part of this car, something that happened here, happened here, not all together, not all the parts. But a specific part happens, something like the, like a, a wheel. Like a door, a door open, and I bind, bind this door open to, to a wheel of this other car. Something happened. I know I'm, I'm going out, but I tried to take something from the real world to explain the code. To make the associations. Two objects, objects. But then the, the only use cars are, are as example. Well, forget, just think about, about, about cars. So, two objects. Two objects. Data binding allow properties, properties are parts of the objects to be linked. So that a change in one causes a change in the other. You see? But these changes occur in these properties. The properties are ways to classes interact with each other. Okay, a way, uh, a way to a class. That be- becomes after when it is instantiated object, a way to a class. And in the, a class inter- interact with each, with other class is true properties. Because properties are something like a interf- not, not interface, I don't use the word interface. It's like something that you can interact. In, in an object. Besides that, you can, you cannot see what's, besides that, you cannot see what, what is inside of an object normally. So, data binding allow properties of two objects to be linked. So that a change in one causes a change in the other. This is a very valuable tool, I agree. And while data binding, bindings can be defined entirely in code. XAML provides shortcuts and convenience. Data bindings. Data bindings connect properties of two objects called, called the source and the target. So, one object is the, is the source and one is the target. Normally you make the configurations in the target, the target object. Most of, most, eh, yes, most, I think everything you make in the target object. In code, two steps are required. The binding context. Property, the binding context property of the target. The binding context property of the target object, object must be set to the source object. So, the target object must be able to see the other object. What are you telling me, see? Uh, a car can see other, a person can see other person, no. Remember, in code, things are isolated. When you create a, create something, you instantiate anything, any type of data, it's just data. Uh, if you don't tell, look, there is this data here and you should interact with it. The, the computer say, why is this data? Behind the scenes. Behind the scenes. Behind the scenes. Not good example. Here. Behind the scenes, when they, when they, uh, when, when a, uh, data, a code. Here, asks, when you say the, this, interact with the, this other object. It's other object, he, he will ask, where? Because he doesn't see. When, when we say a class see, uh, object, see the other or a class, see other class. He will only do that when you point out where is the code to get this, this data. Not, not the ob- uh, the object, of course the object, but also the class. Where I get the data to access this? Because I'm, I'm inside the code, the code that created this, I'm saying to you, go there to a place. And get the data of this. And open, open this data, data of this class, of this instance of, of the class. Inside this other instance. So when he asks where we are talking about this. File infrastructure. Not, not just, sorry, sorry, I'm being wrong. Not, not necessary file infrastructure. Okay, because normally everything is in RAM. I think I'm getting too deep, for you people. Less deep, less deep. Okay, I, I try to explain better. Um, when, when the, the, the data. The data of this object. Here asks, where is, uh, where is the, this other? Uh, object, class, whatever. He's asking. Where in this memory RAM, when it is in memory RAM? No, no, it, it's always in memory RAM. If something, something is, um. Um. When something is saved, kept in hard disk. It is brought to the RAM memory to be used. So it's always in RAM, after all, when you, a pro- program is running. So. When, um, a cla- an object here is asking, where is it? He's asking inside this memory. So you have to point in this RAM memory, where is it? The code of this other object. Okay? And this code is brought to be read inside the code. It's inside the code of this other object. In that part. So, I, I am, I'm going to dip, sorry for you guys. I'm so sorry for you guys. Um, so, when they say, the binding context property of the target object must be set to the source object. So, this binding, binding context probably is, probably is a, a class. Object, a class object inside another object. And what you pass to it? You pass the reference to, to this source. So. The target of, the target. Object, you pass a reference to the, to this source object. What's the reference? Uh, in which place on this memory RAM? It's the objects two, four, six, seven, seven, eight. Ah, it's here. So it's passed, it, and this, and the data, like the address of this object, it's, uh, saved, it's kept. Inside this, this place called, called binding context. So you can see all the object, all the object. And when I say all the object, it's. It's all of the, all of, all of the objects, not just a part. A property, you know, it's all, all of it can be saw. That's why you need a binding context. So, you point out, you, you point out the address to the, to, to the other object. Second, the set binding methods often, the set binding. Set binding methods. It's a method. Not a class. Often you, often using conjunction with, with the binding class. Must be called on the target object. You see? The target object, object does, uh, does everything. Must be called on the target object to bind. Uh, to bind a property of that object. The set binding method must be called on the target object to bind a property. Of that object. To a property of the source object. So, you have a class, binding context. This binding context points out to where is the object. Setting, set binding. The set binding. That binding works like an intermediate between two properties. Of two objects. And when something happens. When something happens. To the target, uh, to the target, um, object. To the target property of the target. Object, the source objects, the, the source property of the source object. You receive this change. Or. There are, there are other ways. Sometimes you want the things from the source go to the target and vice versa. But we'll talk about in later, about this. The target property. The target property must be a, must be a bindable property. The target property. The target property must be a bindable property. How can I explain that? A target property must be, be a bindable part, property. What, what he's saying here is that that property. That property. Which is a type, a type, a specific type of code. Must be, must have a specific, specific, specific type, uh, specific objects. Because every property has a specific object that which it, which each returns. Alright? It returns a specific type of object. And this specific type of object, which means that the target object must derive from bindable pro- bindable object. Bindable ob- object probably is, um. I don't know, uh, interface or, um. I forget the name of the class, there is a specific type of class that need, it, that only, are only derived from. Well, anyways. The bindable, the property must have an object, a class, which is inside of it. It's, it has the bindable object heritage, heritage. Okay? Or the other, in other words, derived from bindable object. Why? Because, uh, there is specific methods that would be called, called. By this property and by the set, set binding method. A property of label. A property, a property of label. Label is, is a class such as text is associated with, with the bindable property, text property. In XAML, you must also perform the same two steps that are required in code. Just a minute. Uh, in XAML, you must also perform the same, the same two steps that are required in code. Except that. The binding. So you must perform the same two steps here. That are required in code, except that the binding markup extension takes the place of the set binding. And of course, there is a markup called binding. And markup extension takes the place of a set binding call and the binding class. However, when you define a data binding in XAML, there are multiple ways to set the binding context of the target object. Sometimes it is set from the code behind file, sometimes using a static resource or a static markup extension. And sometimes as the content of being the, uh, be- binding context property element tags. This static resource is something different. Uh, I still not have a study, I still, I didn't study that enough to, to explain how it works. But it's a way to say, look, just look for a specific object, just once. Stop going after it after that. It's a way to avoid, um. Miss you and not, you wasting, uh, CPU processing, processing time. Sometimes it, it is, it is set from the code behind, code behind it. When you have XAML code, there, uh, it's, well, I have, I had to explain that be- before in the tutorial, so I will not. I will not, um, explain that again, sorry. Um, but behind, sometimes using static resource or static markup or sometimes call content binding property element tags. Um, the data binding expressions on this page. Use compiled bindings. For more information about compiled bindings, see compiled bindings. I don't know, I don't know what i- it is, the compiled bindings. I suspect that the compiled bindings is a way Microsoft made to force, uh. Both the objects, uh, being concretized. Both the. Both the objects and i- its datas, its inside data being concretized. Uh, in, in a way that the, uh, doesn't need to be interpreted. Because C sharp, it can be, most of it is compiled, but there are parts that are interpreted, I believe. Which of course, uh, takes much more time, processing time, because you need to. Like recomp- recompile things. Which is so much efficient in code. Just a moment. Well, just answer me a question, much beloved question. Well, eh, view to view bindings. A view, it's, um, it's the code that shows something in the screen. And a view model, it's something that is not seen by the user, okay? Eh, it's a, it's a simple way to explain. View model, it's a type of, eh, a type of class. And view, it's another type of class. Both of them are classes. But one is a class that writes code that show things in the, in your screen. And the other, eh, it's code that makes, that makes the logic. Okay, the logic of the, of the code, of the program. View to view, so, view to view binding. So sometimes you want, you, you want that, um, something that happens in these classes that are views, eh, one interact with the other or make bindings. You can define the, data bindings. You, you can define data bindings to link properties of two views. You can define data bindings. View to view binding. You can define data bindings. View to view binding. You can define, the, the binding should link properties of two views on the same page. This is a XAML page. These objects are, interpret them as fields because they are going to be seen by the user in certain way, in certain way. You can define data bindings to, to link properties of two views on the, on the same page. In, in this case, you set this, the binding context of the target object, use the, um, in this case, you set the binding context of the target object using the X Reference Markup Extension. Remember, when you use, when you have X, we are using the alias from XAML. So, we are using, we are deriving, deriving from the class XAML. Okay? When you use the X. So, there is an object, a class called Reference. The following example contains a slider and two labels. A slider and two la, eh, labels views. One of each, one of which is rotated by the slider value and another which is, which displays the slider value. Slider. Okay, we have a slider, a label, another label. The slider contains an X name. And its name is, is slider. Contains an X name, an attribute that is referenced by two label views using the X Reference Markup Extension. Here. The X Reference Binding Extension defines a property named, eh, property named, a named property, name to set to the name of the reference element. In this case, slider. So the, this class makes a, the binding context we talked about, begins to, it finds the code from this class, slider, with these data, that you are seeing here. However, the, the Reference Extension class that defines the X Reference Markup Extension also defines a content property, attribute for the name. Which means that it isn't explicitly, which, which means that it is, is, it is not explicitly, explicitly required. The binding markup extension. The binding markup extension itself. The, the binding markup extension itself can have several properties. This is a class, eh, and has, have, have many properties. We're not going to talk about them. The binding markup extension itself can have several properties, just like the binding base and binding class. Probably those classes, eh, are heritage by binding. They, eh, binding derive, probably, probably, no. It's like the binding base class. Ah, okay. Sorry, I, I was not, I was not paying attention. The markup extension, it's similar to the binding class and binding, eh, class of in code. The content property for binding is path. But the path part of the markup extension can be omitted if the path is the first item in the binding markup extension. Eh, here, path, that's the content. So, X Reference Binding Context. Now, I use the binding class and I give which value of the, of this class, here the class, here its reference, here what I want to, to bind from that class here to this property. So, okay. The content, content property for binding is, is path. But the path part of the markup extension can be omitted if the path is the first item in the binding markup extension. I think I have, I should have stopped a bit, have some time, to stop between the moments. Quite sad. Let me finish before I get to binding mode. The second binding markup extension, the second binding markup extension sets the, the string format property. In .NET MAE, bindings do not perform any explicit type conversions. If you need to display a non-string object as, as a string, you must provide a type converter or use a string format. Let's see, eh, here. String format. String format is when you receive a value, when you receive a value that is a string, you can say how, how the, the binding class should, um, adjust the string if it has, if it should show more or, or less or characters, or characters of the string. Formating strings must be placed in a single quotation, quotations marks. I don't know. Let's see here, how much time we are? Okay, already 40 minutes. How farther we are from the? Man, we are pretty far. I will be, I will be beginning, I will be beginning. And I will be stopping here in binding mode. Let me change here the description. Okay. I stopped in binding mode. I will try to make tomorrow after my, my classes, like for foreign language classes. I will try to make 10 minutes studying this and 10 minutes programming, a basic code that I need to make by myself. I'm having so, I'm having so, some ideas. And I want to put that, that in practice, okay? Now we, now is 9:50 PM. And it's getting, getting a bit late and I am a early bird, early bird, I'm not, um, person who stays to, to. I'm not a person who stays until late. So, I will be sleeping by now. I'm finishing here. See, and only this, all of this tomorrow. And have a good night. Bye bye.